It froze.
Oh.
And there's this music still okay. But the YouTube feed froze and I don't know if it's an internet thing or what, but. Jay, you said there's no problem in ending it and having a part two.
I'm sorry.
So. That's what we.
That's.
That was successful.
Thank you, man.
Good morning, Commissioners Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, first here to present this morning our monthly cash flow. So we'll start with economic development. Uh, nothing that was brought in in, um, I'm sorry. Yes, we are in February. We can ahead, sorry. We brought in one hundred and thirty six thousand two hundred and twenty nine dollars in revenue in January and spent thirty two thousand one fifty six forty five. Bringing our unencumbered cash balance to four hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred dollars. Next, we have county building. Total revenue we brought in was two hundred and twenty two thousand seven hundred and eighty six dollars and we spent. Eleven thousand one ninety two, bringing our unencumbered cash balance to four hundred and four thousand two hundred and ninety one. CIP, we brought in a total amount of three million eight hundred and twenty three thousand three hundred and twenty eight dollars. And we spent two hundred and forty five thousand five hundred and twenty three dollars. Bring our unencumbered cash balance to twenty nine million seven hundred and twenty seven thousand eight hundred and sixty two dollars. Running list of projects here. Next, we have half cent sales tax. Obviously, we are no longer bringing in revenue for that, but we did spend sixty three thousand four hundred and seventy three dollars. Bringing our unencumbered cash balance to six million four hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and three dollars. And then we have the point two cent sales tax and we're running two hundred and thirty six thousand one hundred and twenty one dollars. We don't have any expenditures at this point for this sales tax fund and we have an uncovered cash balance of five million eighty one thousand four hundred and eighty four dollars. Any questions on the cash flows? Great. Um, I am still including the ARPA amounts because you guys requested these. Uh, so this is just our monthly. Tracking spreadsheet uh that we have for all of the projects. It tracks all of the expenditures, where we're at budgetarily. Um, and then. We have, you know, lists out here explicitly like what it was for. Um, so this helps us track where we're at in the project too. And questions on the ARPA? Next, we will jump into RHID.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I can go on down to that. Okay. So CIP reserve, um, so back in two thousand eighteen, you had a hardware refresh reserve that was established. Um, and every year there was a budgetary amount transferred into CIP for County General. Um, so to date, we have one million one hundred and eighty two thousand two hundred and twenty one dollars. Um, through multiple conversations last year, um, actually it started when I started, we started having conversations about. What is this money? Do we need it? Reviewing contracts. Um, and then we met with KCOM and Harris last year. And determined that that refresh amount was already part of the contract that we're currently paying. And so we had that money set aside. Um. Now we can do whatever commission directs us to do with that. Um, so. Like I said, we have the total amount transferred was one million thirty four four forty six from twenty eighteen until twenty twenty four. And now, of course, um. We had transferred a little bit more this year. Um. So we, oh, sorry. So moved to approve releasing the reserve funds totaling one million thirty four thousand four forty six. Um, we had talked about, you know, could it be used for strategic planning or any other projects that the commission directs us to? Uh, we can still hold it in reserve or we can release it. However. Uh, you guys would like to proceed on that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. The reserves. I mean. Can be used for the same thing. CIP would just keep everything. Just clear to me, so clear that this is in reserve. It's not reserved for anything in particular.
Right. Mm hmm.
But just be clear, you can just soon add it to the regular CIP funds. Anything we do it, just a little bit more history on that. The previous director, when we first made the radio exchange. Uh, was adamant that at the end of fifteen years, I believe it was, we were going to have a large sum payout for maintenance. Um, Brittany came and involved, uh, on board. We went through and reviewed the contract and met with our current. Ian, uh, director and, uh. And the vendors and said. We don't believe we're going to owe this at the end. And so we met with, uh. The provider here locally and then the vendor they deal work with. And I said, yeah, you're not going to owe anything. That was in the original. The purchase price. So that's how we got there to that point.
Any other questions on it?
Board want to give staff direction on how you want us to proceed on. Uh, just opening up that reserve and regular CIP balance to be used for any project the board needs necessary.
Regular CIP funds.
We agree with all that.
Yeah.
We need to.
Yeah, if we get a motion on that, great. Um, I'll go ahead and move to approve releasing the reserve funds totaling one million. Uh, three. I can't see them there. Oh, it's apparently. It's me. Um, the amount up there made available for other projects through capital improvement.
I would second that.
And move and second, approve releasing the reserve funds totaling one million thirty four thousand four forty six that available for other projects. All in favor?
I. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have RHID. It's rolling back. Okay, so the last time we talked about RHID, um, and the policy that we had drafted was on January sixteenth. Um, and we presented it with the Manhattan Housing Study. And after reviewing the policy, Commissioners directed staff. To make these three changes. So we include an affordability section detailing the county will consider affordability in terms of HUD's definitions. Um, the RHID applications are to be presented on an individual basis. And any RHID term over two, ten years will be presumed to have an adverse effect on the county. And I listed out the sections that we added this verbiage into. Um, and that those were the only changes that we made to the policy. From the last conversation that we had. Whether there are any questions on those? Hey, and I think Jacob wanted to add some information.
Yeah, I may commissioners. I'd like to make a few just comments about our policy in general, since it seems that there may be some misunderstandings. Um. Namely, uh, speaking generally of this policy. The purpose, uh, is to give the commissioners a set of factors to consider. If these factors, if certain numbers go over, such as let's, let's use an example of the tenure. If you guys get in a RHID policy that's over ten years, we're saying in the policy that that has an adverse effect on the county presumptive. Now. It can still be presented to the county. You guys can still consider it. And you guys can still approve it if you so choose. The point of the policy is to say. To our other local governing bodies, this is what we would like to see. This is mainly what our preferences are. It doesn't require strict adherence. To those points. It just is there to create a presumptive, again, the way it's titled in the policy is that it's a presumptive adverse effect. The key here being presumptive, which means it could be rebuttable. Which means. We can go over. We can, if you guys so choose. You can. Decide to take maybe a fifteen year RHID or a twenty five year RHID. You don't have to buy the policy, stick with ten years. And that applies to any other factors. This is what this applies also to affordability. With eighty percent income. This is again, just helpful guidelines to what you guys would consider. We can change these if we still want to. Uh, but this is just kind of our basis. You are not beholden to those factors. Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that. Any questions on? On that?
I have a question. Now, these, these projects, as are presented, going by one or whatever, we can look at each. Individual one to make a ruling on an individual rather than the whole.
Right. And in, in the policy as well, it is stated in there that we prefer. That they be presented individually. If they're presented as a group, that again goes back to the language of presumptive adverse effect.
Okay.
Which means you guys can.
I do not.
We have been subbed with soundness. In that three minutes. Mm hmm. Not cooperating today.
It's becoming.
Okay, cool.
Um, my name is Zach Burton. One of the RHID projects that's been passed by the city of Manhattan, um, is my wife Michelle and I's. And so I just, my main question is, is, um. It was mentioned that you want engagement with the county in the process. How does that look like? Or what does that look like to you guys? So this is our. Fourth meeting I think we've been to regarding RHID. And this is the first time we've had an opportunity to address you. Um, so I think. What we really want is for that process to start very, very early, to know if it's something that you guys have interest in. We are further along in the process right now than I would like to be without engagement with you guys. And so it's not something that we're trying to hide. I don't think any of the other applicants would feel that way either, but I don't want to speak for them. It's just that that would be one, one thing that we would like is just some direction about how we engage with you earlier. What forum that takes? Where do we do that? How do we do that?
Because our stuff so far has just been kind of like they said, setting up our guidelines.
For sure.
But, uh, do we want to have, would we want to put them on the agenda? I mean.
Well, yeah, I, I think.
If, if.
At a point.
I mean, I know when the final thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But even a preliminary, if they wanted to come up and give us a preliminary report on it, you could just call in and get put on the, call in to Cindy. And that, that. That's update us on what it is exactly you're planning.
I mean, I'm guessing because all these projects are sitting at the Department of Commerce right now, the state level. Waiting to be approved or not approved. And then there's a series of.
They have been approved by the Department.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. So. Um. So then that engages the next. Set of processes, which. Thirty days, is that what it is? There's no timeline. Okay, I didn't know that. Okay. So my goal would be to set up some sort of a, a carrying on each specific project. Even the parameters of everything, I think, is us a chance to. Engage with our concerns or our ideas or our issues and then.
And I think that's really a wise step. Um, because if, if it's, if it's like a definite no from you guys, we don't want to spend the money that it's going to take to put together the formal application. If there are ways that you guys envision it that maybe we haven't thought of yet, it's really valuable insight to us. Because maybe we can like move some things around or tailor it to fit, fit what you want. Or what makes sense for everybody in the county. And so that's really, we want that collaboration. We want that opportunity like to present, I think, at least we do. So that we can just get your ideas and your feedback. And that's really helpful to us. So.
Well, that's a, that's a, you know, the, the questions that I have had with this, um, RHID and. What's been presented is that, you know, the, the cost for a homeowner that sound like. A project is way beyond a workforce, like a teacher or a nurse or, you know. Regular working people, they just don't fit the parameters of what we've seen, you know, people can't afford it.
Right.
So I want to see, I want to see really solid. Numbers on what you consider is affordable and in the workforce and other.
And I think that was a wise step that you took today to adopt like the HUD numbers, you know, like that, that's something that helps us know exactly what you're looking for too. It's just the clarity. Is really all we're looking for and how we like. It's also hard when you have to develop a policy because that has to apply to everything. And then when you actually like hone in on one project and how that can affect things, uh, and, and help the community. I think it's, it's easier to talk about specifics than it is about big generalities. So. So you would just, I guess you would, uh, encourage us to call Cindy and to set up an agenda item.
Yeah.
Regarding each specific project would be like the next step you'd like to see. Okay. Thank you guys for your time.
Yeah, I guess it's an important question to ask there too, is, yeah, really haven't had the opportunity to. Engage with all three of these sort of projects that are, um, that are currently.
We haven't been told anything, many of them.
I know.
I read the paper and I.
I've met with, with one group separately, but I haven't had that discussion, but I. Um. It's better to have it here where everybody's in, involved in a conversation and it's open dialogue and it's an open meeting. You know, we can all hash those things out concurrently in one, one place. One thing I might add is a scrivener, right? Although Jacob's the one that's doing the work on, on, I've been. I've been almost the definition of uninvolved in the, in the de, uh, development of the policy. I just had other things been working on. But one thing you really consider, right, is defining in writing, right, what we just said. Yeah. Which is that get on the agenda with something, right? And we could even explain it's a good idea to do that prior to submitting formal application. We consider, I can tell you that. From, if I remember correctly. The way that we became aware that any of these projects or that the RHID. Um, itself was moving forward towards an implementation phase was that we received an application. Um, from, uh, I, I think for one project and that hadn't. And then that's when our internal staff, and I believe that was in. Early December. Was that, I can't remember, but that's when, that's when a lot of this started to, um, come up. It was, it was in the late fall. That's my memory. And so that's how the county first became aware and perhaps. Establish pushing away to formalize, you know, upfront engagement. That could be something that could be added. Yeah. But it could also be handled, just like the commission has said, right? Just get up, calm, get on the agenda with Cindy. It's not hard to get on our agenda. So. I would, I would prefer it to be in the policies. I want that outlines that procedure. So it's. Um, it's consistent. Cause that's what we hear is consistent. Sure.
And this way this is written to me, it gives a lot of opportunity for that ends, you know, what we've said to look at each, each project. Individually, you know, I don't have problems that we've got now.
So we can insert a phrase into the, that would say, before you submit an application to the city, please come for our governing body. Call Cindy to get on the agenda. It's that simple. And if that's, uh, uh, something that the government body would like to see added, happy to do it. Okay?
That would be good. We usually get blindsided with these, these things.
Uh, first off, I appreciate the opportunity to provide you an update on where we are with RHIDs at the city. Uh, I'm Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development for the City of Manhattan. Um, we, up to this point, we have followed statutory process. Um, so I will address, uh, some concerns I have of, uh, before an applicant submits an application to the city of them showing up here. But I can, I can get to that. Um, we received notification from the Kansas Department of Commerce towards the mid part end of January. That they agreed with the findings that the three RHIDs that were proposed and applied for through the city. That they met the housing needs analysis that we, we did in twenty twenty two. Um, kind of our, uh, I said earlier that there's really not a, a timeline in this point of the process. It's really up to the developers to decide how quickly they want to move. And so at this point, we're waiting for them to put together all the details of their plan and then to go approach the city commission again. Once the developers go back to the city commission, that's when the formal action in the statutory process resumes. So up until that point, there is no timeline. Um, what we had identified at our work session, uh, a couple of months ago, is that we are at the time, this kind of, uh, midpoint, after we hear from the Kansas Department of. Department of Commerce that they're good with the RHIDs and that they agree with, um. That they meet our needs. That's when we would begin to resume conversations with the developers and come back with you once we have more information. Uh, what the developers have shared with me so far is they're hesitant to put too many, too much of that work and, and Mr. Burton just shared that with you right now. Too much of that, uh, that work put together until they kind of get a sense that first the Kansas Department of Commerce is going to approve it. And if the city commission doesn't want to approve it, there's no use in even bringing that forward. And so we plan to have some preliminary conversations with our city commissioners to make sure they're good with the, the three proposed projects. Um, they would not take any sort of formal action before we come back and visit with you all and the. Board of Education. So that's the process that we are looking at right now. Um, I think that asking. Um, asking the developers to, uh, come to the, the county before they've even submitted an application with the city. There is a couple, there's actually two different parts, parts of our process. One's a preliminary application, making sure they meet our eligibility as far as a policy. The second of which is what starts the conversations of whether the city even wants to pass a resolution to send on to the Department of Commerce. So I feel like those two steps are really critical. They're part of the statutory process before we start to engage on a product that may change through the course. Um, of that, of that action. Um, so those are the comments I have. I'm always happy to come and give you an update on where we are in the process. I would invite that. That invitation from you all, um, and hope to be partners on this.
Hi, Commissioners, Gavin Schmidt. I'm one of the applicants as well. I just want to echo Zach's, uh, point regarding, you know, feedback and Commissioner Fokie, I appreciate you mentioning. You know, affordability is one of, one of the maybe hot, hot button issues or an issue for you guys. I think. I guess what I'm asking for is if you can give specific items within the RHID program in and of itself. Or if, if you have specific items within any of our projects that you could specifically point to that are maybe giving you heartburn. I think that'd be helpful that when we come back, uh, with a agenda item and have a presentation, we can, we can speak to those directly and hopefully. Help resolve some of those issues. Uh, I think what we want to do is just be as efficient as possible and not, not have to. Come here multiple times and waste your guys' valuable time. But yeah, if you guys have specific things within the RH program that you would want to see addressed, or if you say, man, the, these are. Where I'm really struggling with this, that'd be helpful. And then we can really tailor our, uh, presentation to those needs. So, thank you.
Now, I did bring this up at the last, at the last, at the meeting that we did. I, I brought up the same concerns. So.
That's great.
Hello, Mark Bashamp, and I'm not involved with any of the three projects that's out there, but I'm involved with projects around the state with RHIDs. And I'll tell you, by what you're doing with the two conditions with putting income limits and also putting term limits. Uh, any outside developer looking at this community will not even look at it. They'll go to Fauk County, they'll go someplace else. Because they don't want to fight it. They don't want to deal with, uh, having to come and, and, uh, get approval and go through the steps needed when they go someplace else and they don't need to. Don't make it hard on Riley County to grow because that's what's happening. That's what's going to happen. The, I'll tell you right now, doing the calculations with some of these projects that I've been involved with. Ten years is not even, not even, it's a deal breaker right there. It needs to be twenty twenty five. You don't recoup the costs of your infrastructure over ten years. It doesn't work. You're not going to lower your, your, uh, rents, your payments, uh, you're still going to have specials on them. Th- that's what these are, is to reduce those specials. And, uh, and compensate for that to replace us. Cause right now, they're out of control. On special assessments on some of these developments that's happening. RHID will supplement that. And bring those monthly payments down so people can afford homes. Income limits, y- y- you need houses in every direction. I think MBSK is bringing in more people. I think they're bringing in it, at, at, uh, from. Lower level to the higher level. Where are those, where are those people going to live? We need new subdivisions. We need new housing. We need new apartments. We need the whole gamut of things. If you don't start supplementing things through the process. Is, we're not going to grow. And our sales tax base, our property tax base, it's just going to still, it's going to be hurting. So anyway, that's all I had to say.
Tom Phillips, uh, I spoke earlier this morning. Thank you for opening this up for public comment. I appreciate that. Uh, just a couple of comments. Uh, it was comforting. I, I'm sorry, I, I don't know your name, but to hear his comments, but I would, and I'm not an attorney. Uh, the presumptive, uh, clause may be in there. I located it in one location. My suggestion is to put it in simple language. That these are general guidelines and that you have the flexibility to vary. A- as a citizen reading this last night, I saw a lot of shells. Uh. It, it, it seems contrary to what I heard earlier there. Uh, those make me nervous. And I have sat in your chair before. And I, and you will be faced with, with controversial decisions. And every language and every sentence in here can be either used by a proponent or an opponent. To take their position. So just be very cautious about, about what you're saying. Um. Commissioner Fokie, I understand the concern about. Commissioner Fokie, I understand the concern about affordability. I, I would encourage the commission to meet with some of our builders and land developers so that you can understand the challenges that they have in providing, I, I've heard repeatedly, we need to have a two hundred thousand dollar or two hundred fifty thousand dollar home. I, I encourage you to investigate. What's, what's the feasibility of that? Because when you talk to builders and developers, it is very difficult, if not impossible, to build a new structure in that timeframe or in, in that price point. Just, just a couple of comments. Um. I, I highlighted in here, and this is in the policy statement. Do the amount of eligible infrastructure required in Riley County is predisposed to support urban infill. Which is good. I certainly support that. Uh, over suburban sprawl. And the question that came into my mind, we have an urban area growth boundary. And, and I, I, I think, and I would defer to our city planning uh, department director that that language be in there so that there's not confusion about what is suburban sprawl. Cause if a development is proposed inside the urban growth area boundary, my definition is that's not urban sprawl. But somebody else could define it differently. So it's that kind of level of specificity that I think needs to be in here. Um, well, anyway, I, I'll go back to our, my opening comments about um. I, I understand the county staff has been working on this, but this is really the first chance that we as general members of the public have a chance to give input. And we really think there, there's not harm slowing down and, and allowing stakeholders to, to give you some additional input. So with that, I, I will sit down.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions? Um, I have some notes on um, things that I heard that the commission wanted to do and I just want to clarify, that's how you still want to handle it. Um, adding in a section to set up time on the agenda before they present to the city.
I thought it was, the current ones were presented to the city and they went through the Department of Commerce.
Yes, that, that's what they do. So they present to the city and the city submits it. But what I heard was that you guys wanted to hear um, about those RHID applications before they were presented to the city. So I just want clarification on how we're going to adjust that in the.
To be clear, right, this is a discretionary, right? Number one. I would not think that it would be applied to the existing applications. Right? We're trying to establish a process moving forward now that this has become something that the community is considering. Right? Number two, right? It doesn't have to be bef- it doesn't have to be necessarily before it goes before the city. Right? The, the, as, again, as somebody that is just trying to read and interpret what everybody's asking to do. Right? One of the things that the city talks about is giving meaningful input upfront before developers spend money on making applications, right? So that they have an understanding of what might be entertained by the county commission. Not locking yourself necessarily in doing that, but it might, it might be best to consider when would be the best point so that someone in the developers', you know, shoes, doesn't spend a whole lot of money. Right? Making an application that we're going to be in a position to say, and I say we, it's you all, sorry. Um, but that the commission would be in a position to say, yeah, we've looked at it. It looks like it's a great project, but we don't know that it could justify this much property tax abatement for this long. Or, yeah, go for it, right? It's six, one, that does the other. When would you like to hear that? I think, and it could be something, it could be maybe within thirty days after it's been submitted for application to the city. It could be before it goes, right? It, it, it's, it's really how you would like to deal with it. It could be maybe thirty days after they submitted a preliminary application to the city and gotten some feedback. I mean, that's one way to.
So I don't think we're going to require it, except to then, you know.
Okay.
Um, my thoughts are, they're not required to do it, but it's just if they want clarification from us, they can, they can come and ask us before. And I don't think that's started through the initial uh, application, but as Stephanie said, they're still finalized and they might want to do that before they have their final one at that point. So I would think they want to find out our opinion on it before they come, you know, for finals. But it's, I don't think we have required it. That's just up to them if they want to.
Okay.
So you do, you don't want that added into the policy?
I think we need to have a process on how that actually works if they want to do that. I think we do need to find that.
Okay. Rich.
Jones. Yeah, you know, kind of what gets us to this point is this board hears from the Manhattan Mercury and through meetings that there's an RHID coming. And they hear little snippets and don't know whether what they're hearing is correct or not. So the earlier they hear in the process, regardless of the city and the state's process, they're going to have a significant decision to make, as does the school district. And so the more they know early on of the correct information, the better it is for everyone. We don't get any situations. That's really what's gotten us here on this. This is entirely new for our entire community. Yeah, they've been in the process, right? But they have been hearing through maybe a city meeting or an intergovernmental, just broad brush strokes or what they read through the mercury around K-Man. So the earlier you guys bring it to them to help educate them and us on it, a lot of this can be avoided and cleared up earlier. So somewhere along the line, it would be nice, the earlier the better for this board, I would think, you know.
But does that affect what we have before us? That's.
Well, it, it would not affect, as I would, I mean, I'm not putting words in the commission's mouth, but I wouldn't advise you to make it a mandatory requirement for anything that's already been submitted, right? What we could say is we would, we could simply add language, right? And then this would give some flexibility to policy that says we encourage, right, developers to schedule time. Right? As early in the, in their process of applications possible. And then that provides the community some flexibility. It also explains the board's desire to gather, you know, information about something as early as is feasible for the developer to do that, right? That's a, that's a point of flexibility that would also say, we encourage you to do it. You don't have to, right? But we encourage you to do it. Probably a good idea to do it so that we actually know what we're talking about. We're not getting it through here. But that's, that's another thing that the board could consider doing as well.
I like that.
You like that? So we would say that.
Got it. Uh, Jacob, we'll get that language added in. And then we will obviously bring that back for final approval. Is there anything else Commissioner is wanting us to add, adjust based on any of the comments we heard today?
I think everything else is good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Might give it a little bit of time. Like we approached mid-March or something, in case something comes up that we need to discuss ahead of time before finalizing.
Time is money.
I mean, if this is what we decided.
It's board discretion. You could approve it subject to us, you know, um. Subject to us adding that language. And what we would do in that case is we would simply have it on a, on a, it would be approved today subject to the addition of that language. And what I would recommend, since this is such an important policy, is that at the next governing body meeting, after we get the language added, we would just have it on business agenda. Um, for, you know, to formalize adoption of it, but it's already adopted. It's just basically saying, this is our document now and everybody will have one chance, one last chance to glance at it, if that makes sense. Uh, but I don't offer an opinion as to whether that's good, bad, or different. That's just one option, right?
Let's get all the language put together and we do it one more time.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
We will do that and we will be back um, probably next week if there's time on the agenda. It's Thursday.
Thursday, I think, is our next meeting.
On our own lunch.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hopefully we'll have a little time somewhere.
We do it lunchtime, so long as you're good with it, I'm good with it.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe I need to bring cookies. So, thank you, Commissioners.
Um, so, thanks, thanks to everybody who came today and say that.
I don't have any, no, I'm good. I'm going to go ahead and make motion that we adjourn the uh, February thirteenth.
Oh, yeah.